We cannot hear.
Thank you.
All right.
Here's Terry.
Good luck.
Here's Terry.
Ah, Terry, we're waiting on you.
Oh.
Yeah.
Don't, don't get sit down.
You are.
Hey, listen, I'm like Carol from video again. No, no. And I love her and I love her so.
Just a little bit late.
Just a little.
Yeah.
Downtown, you know.
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
Rocky just introduced John and told us he was gonna retire. So, you know, John, we were asking him if he had a Terry at home to wind him up like you did for Rocky, so.
Yes, I have, her name is Pam.
Big shoes to fill.
She has big boots.
There you go. Here we go. Strong women make good men.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, Rocky, congratulations.
Yeah, Rocky.
We all look forward to having that.
Well done.
Privilege and working hard enough to be able to get to that, so thank you for your, your hard work and all of your cooperation.
And a lot on those PLAs.
I'm still gonna call you guys, I still have your number on my phone.
Oh, I still have your number. It'll be the same number, you just transfer it over to a different name. It's gonna be my number.
Well, I'll get your number too.
We got your number, Carol.
Oh, here we go.
Everybody has.
Thank you, gentlemen. Terry, good to see you. Absolutely. Wow.
Commissioners, I just wanna say Rocky was your appointment to our board. We always asked you to appoint a labor rapid. He was outstanding and he had to replace rap, Aaron Ali, and his hard, hard shoes to fill, but you filled them. And thank you. He's a good board member, we're going to work with. And even though it's, there is Terry to back him up, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? Mr. Orr.
Good to be here.
Did you grow a mustache?
That's what everybody keeps telling me, I've always had it.
Boy, really standing out.
It's grayer than it was.
It's a nice one.
Good to see you all.
Good to see you too. Okay, nobody else? Public comments? No? Okay. That being said, I will ask for a motion to approve previous minutes of board meeting number 28 and approval bills for payment.
Sound move.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Revideo again?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffington?
Yes, journal entry number one.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Revideo again?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffington?
Yes, agreements A through D. Engineers, Pat.
Morning, everybody. Larry's in agreement with PNC Express Services. This is for quarterly cleaning at the office building and garages. Paid an amount of seventy-four hundred dollars. This is a continuation of the cleaning we did at this infection during COVID with the Delta variant starting to rear its head. We wanted to make sure we're being proactive and stay on top of it.
Move. Thank you. Ian Martin, good to see you, my friend.
Morning, yes. Good morning. Good morning. This particular property is in conjunction with Ledhards Control and Home Fund from City Youngstown, so you see that the, um, the cost is a little bit higher than what we usually have on the board. Thirty-one thousand five hundred is from the city of Youngstown for home funds. So when we use home funds, then we have to bring certain items up to code. So this particular property costs a little bit more.
Thank you. All right, prosecutors, we have anybody?
Commissioners. This is a random of understanding with Ohio's, Ohio State Highway Patrol for Law Enforcement Automated Data System, which is the lead system for services in amount of three thousand two hundred forty dollars and is now in general.
Okay, thank you. Is Danny Emma here? Is he on the, our treasurer? Okay, Audrey, would you handle it?
Commissioners, this is agreement with Nesco Resources LLC. Doing business as college resources to provide temporary employment services in estimated amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty, and that's during their collection period.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Motion to approve number two agreements A through D.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Revideo again?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffington?
Yes, under change orders A and B, Dan Or.
These change orders are for both A and B for particular, they had to control work of particular items that came up during the normal, they had to control work in order to make sure that housing unit is cleared, let's say.
Motion?
Motion approved number three change orders A and B.
Second, roll call. Yes. Yes. Yes, resolutions?
Motion approved number one, resolutions additions.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Revideo again?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffington?
Yes. Resolution awards A and B, O and B grants. Anna?
Morning Commissioners. This award is for the Grand Re Road Improvement Phase One Project. Be awarded to Chagrin Valley Paving Inc. in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars fifty cents as non-general and low bid, and this is part of our community program.
Thank you, Anna. Sanitary, Pat.
Commissioners, letter B is the award of the Neander Eastland Truitt Plant Resurfacing, which is approved number five twenty-five. Lending paving with low bidder, the amount of two hundred ninety-four thousand ninety-two dollars. Non-general funds in low bid.
Okay. Motion approved resolution awards A and B.
Sound move.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Revideo again?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffington?
Yes, three resolutions, letters A through F, and Audrey, letter A?
Letter A is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a credit card in the name of Mahoney County Children's Services, and we have Denise here to speak on that.
Hi Denise.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
On behalf of Randy, this is to cover emergency services for children outside of the scope of vendors that are currently in muted. And we've had a few instances where employees have to personally pay for items. So this is why we want the credit card and the limit rule should be under a thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Don't worry about a thing. Now Audrey passes them out like, like God. As long as they have Anthony's name on them. And the bill goes to his house and.
Oh, yeah. I'm good at paying bills, by the way. All right. Uh, letter B, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Bill, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Okay.
Just wanted to come down today on behalf of our board and thank you for allowing us to put this review on the ballot. Obviously, funding is highly important to our program and services to the fifteen hundred individuals and families that we serve. Early intervention all the way to elder adults, whether that be in transportation, day programming, ATOT services, residential. Just, you know, this obviously helps fund a multitude of services, and we can use those dollars to draw down federal dollars through the Medicaid waiver program. At about a two and a half to one clip, you know, about a sixty, forty, fifty-five, we're now with the, uh, the enhanced FMAP that we get in the federal Medicaid program, so again, we just wanted to come down and thank you and appreciate all your continued support of our programs. Thank you. If you have any questions, if you have it.
I just, yeah, I just, you're doing a great job up there. I mean, the MCC, MCC, DD board and your staff working with mental health and Dwayne, different programs, we all have. I've never seen such a partnership and a team that we have most underserved, so continue your good work.
Yeah, this, well, obviously, you know, something you're probably keenly aware of, you know, something that's really kind of, I mean, hitting all across the country, but it's locally. You know, something they're calling multi-system youth, as you know. Something we're trying to actually do out at YDC with developing rest of home boot providers and working with Dwayne and Randy and, you know, his staff with some of these youth and Judge Delick, so. You know, these funds obviously help support that as well because that is vitally critical now because I've told you before, we've, we've had to send, you know, youth off, you know, very far away, sometimes out of state because we've not been able to have those providers locally and hopefully, you know, when maybe some of the staffing crisis and staffing shortage goes down, our partner that we partner without a YDC will be able to open those rest of homes to the community.
They have, it's good to keep them in their own area. I mean, they can't help if they're not well.
It's kinda hard to keep the family intact when the child's three and a half hours away.
And the parents just, and the guardians have a hard time with that, so I applaud that partnership.
It's a travesty with the states, though. You and Dwayne, you know, God bless you both for working so hard to try and keep it together, you know? It's been a difficult, how many years since Casey changed things quite a bit?
Fifteen, they announced the vote.
Yep, they did. Two thousand seventeen, it went down.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. And honestly, if I would have been the governor, I don't know how he would sleep at night doing what he did. That was unbelievable.
Privatized things. Sometimes that's not the right way.
Okay, letter C, job and family. Audrey Morales.
Need to unmute my Audrey. Boy, I purposely unmuted myself so that I would not have to do that, and look what happened. See, I moved too fast. All right, good morning Commissioners, Audrey and Nancy. Job and Family Service Resolution approving the appointment of one MIS specialist for IT department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Audrey.
Okay.
Led? Mr. Martin?
This is, uh, this is just, we usually go on a contract with the lab if our lab, the health lab is closed for any reason for any lead results. And this time this year, we have to go over a thousand dollars, right, twenty-two dollars and seventy cents, so this is a more allocation to pay that. And we're gonna go into contract with them for the rest.
Thanks, Dan. Sanitary, Pat.
Commissioner, just a resolution approving an unpaid leave of absence for one employee beginning July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, sir. And Sheriff, Mr. Ibers.
This is a resolution for a JAG grant for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And some partnership with the City of Youngstown. It's coming from the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance. Our share is in the amount of eighteen thousand eight eighty-three fifty, which we're gonna use towards new radio for the creatures.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion approved number three, resolutions A through F.
Second, roll call. Yes.
Commissioner Revideo again?
Yes.
Yes. And for the good of the order, the elected officials or department heads care to comment, Anna.
You start first.
I was quick.
I'd like to introduce to you and to whomever else watching, two new employees. Mahoney County has, uh, hired, and we have Jody Shaw. She is the Cal clerk in the Commissioner's office, working and with me in special projects and O and B. And here we have Betty Del Friday, and she's working with Megan Maisel in the purchasing department. Two new hires. Thank you, Commissioners, very much.
Welcome.
Welcome. None of the two you ladies are from Struthers, are you? That's, that's definitely, you know, we don't want any more relationships to patch and add. There's like a million of them out there.
I think they're from Austintown. Is that all right? Is that okay?
God's country, yeah.
How about Austintown?
Where are you from? Corner Street.
All right, Youngstown.
You got all the corner stuff?
I like that.
Okay, well, welcome aboard. You're working with a great lady, Anna. She's been around a long time, and she knows more about government than I'll ever know. So we appreciate her very highly.
Been around a long time.
Anyone else?
Yes, Commissioners, I did send you a letter from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services acknowledging JFS again for a hundred percent accuracy rate and determining SNAP benefits for our clients for timeliness and accuracy. So I just want to mention that again. We did it for January, again, during the pandemic months, we were able to reach that. And this is, as Commissioner Ditzler asked me before, they pull cases from all eighty county, eighty-eight counties, and just check their accuracy rate and the timeliness, and we qualified in that again.
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, the mission is to serve the people. The two hundred and sixty-two thousand of us, and you're doing that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Okay, anyone else? No? Carol?
I don't know, it just seems like yesterday we were on the road looking at a vacation in Goshen Township, and I had the privilege of driving Nancy and Audrey, and we drove to Goshen, and it was, the vacation was at Cornfield. And I'm, I'm looking at the vacation and Mr. Jim Durbin, Jim Durbin, Bob Durbin was there, and.
Carol, be, be a little more explanatory. She wasn't going on vacation in Goshen. They were looking at, you're vacating a paper street, road.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And it's called vacating a road, so we're, we're wondering where you were staying at on your vacation.
I actually was gonna stay at the new bed and breakfast they're gonna have down the street and winery.
Nice.
But I mean, it was like amazing how driving to Goshen or anywhere else, you see all the vacant land and the farms that are out in this county. I mean, if you ever have a chance to drive Mahoney County, it is a beautiful county. I mean, a lot of greenery, a lot of roads, a lot of gardens, and, and it's just unreal. And so we did go there, you know, greeted well by the trustees. Anthony and I were there. It was nice. We had a, it took us longer to get there than it did. I don't know what the hell I did to him.
Long windpipe.
Can I borrow you two in about a twenty, ten minutes? But anyway, it was very good, and they, and Bob did a great job. We drove by, we didn't know what's, where it was because it wasn't a paper street, but unreal. The development they're gonna start to do out in Goshen.
Good deal.
Are you okay with that, so we know?
Yeah, I like to go on vacation at Sebring Mansion, though, not, not at the Goshen Winery. I don't, I'm not a wine. But, um, thanks. I, I guess I'd just add, um, the other day I was, the other day I had an opportunity to, to go up to Dog Pound and meet with Basha, one of the city council people in Youngstown, and Diane Frye, the, um, our dog warden, you know, we were talking about issues with, the city used to participate with us for one of the dog wardens to assist picking up dogs in Youngstown because, you know, quite honestly, about seventy-five percent or more is of the patrolling we do and the picking up of stray animals who are in the city. So we were talking about, you know, meeting with city council, going to their safety committee and, and discussing, you know, participating again a program that we had in place several years ago that was discontinued. And it, it just happened to be the same day, you know, that the incident happened with Dave Nelson, one of our, our assistant dog warden. You know, it's, it's, I'm an animal lover through and through, you know, I've got tons of cats, dogs, everything, you know, so, you know, it's, it's one of my pet peeves, you know, we all try to, to focus on, like Carol always tells us, you know, the children, the elderly, the animals, ones that, the disabled, ones that can't take care of themselves. You know, you have to make sure you focus on and do the right thing on behalf of all of them. The Dog Pound, the, the ladies and the gentlemen that work at the Dog Pound, you know, have an extremely difficult job. You know, any, anytime that you're there, there's between forty and seventy dogs. I try to stop there and give everyone a bone sometimes, you know, or just a treat, you know, walk through, and, and my wife shot me down. There was actually one dog there I wanted to bring home this week, you know, I was gonna bring it home for the weekend and, you know, and she's like, you know, we've got too much going on to start with a new dog, you know, and it's like, okay, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm working on it though until Friday. But when I was there, we were going through a lot of the issues and different things that needed to be done, and, you know, the, the people that work for the Dog Pound, you know, barely make, you know, a living wage. They don't make a living wage. And then they start out at twelve dollars an hour and some change. They're out on the road picking up stray dogs. It's very difficult responsibility to try and patrol the, the community and protect people because some of the dogs are vicious dogs, a lot of them, you know, that, that are on the streets for how long. They have to set traps up, try to catch them, you know, try and protect neighborhoods where there's dogs, you don't know what their, what their situation is. It's very stressful for the people that work in those positions. It's a very difficult task for them to undertake. Dave Nelson is prob, is the most experienced person we have in the dog, working for the dog warden. He's done an amazing job for a long time, you know, and, and he is literally parked with two dogs in, in his, in his van, waiting for animal charity to arrive and take the dogs from him over to animal charity. And an individual got into it, came down and literally went through the window of his car with a knife and tried to stab him. And he blocked this, the individual from stabbing him with his arm and was, was injured, you know, severely. And so here's, here's a gentleman doing his job, you know, on the streets, you know, helping the community, protecting people, and the situation arises to that extent, you know, and, and when we talk about, you know, people with issues or mental illness and different things, you know, it's, it exists everywhere, you know, and, and, you know, these individuals also have to go into people's house, you know, and they have to confiscate dogs, they have to take them, you know, and there's a lot of volatile situations, a lot of emotional situations. They do a fantastic job, and it's a stressful setting, and, you know, my point is just that, you know, we all have a responsibility and a job to do, and it's unfortunate that somebody like Dave Nelson, who's done so much for so many, for so long, gets placed in, into a situation where this happens, and, and no fault of his own. So, you know, my heart goes out to Dave Nelson and his family, and really, all the people that work at the Dog Pound and the difficult tasks they have for, you know, and every one of them can go to Starbucks and make more money and make coffee. Now, so it's, it's something that they have a passion for, and they, you know, and God bless that we have people that do things like that. I always talk about Dwayne and Bill, and, you know, they take care of the people that, that are in situations where, you know, they need assistance. You know, this is the same situation, you know, with the animals that we take care of, and, you know, just, you know, hopefully, everything's good with Dave and there's no repercussions with his health, and, you know, the people that do such a fantastic job, you know, I wanna thank them all, and I thank Basha for being involved and coming to the Dog Pound and discussing and trying to improve the situation because incorporated areas have different authority, that they could do things differently to help control the situation with stray animals. That regular unincorporated areas don't have that ability. So she's gonna bring it to safety committee and try to assist, and that all was transpired prior to the Dave Nelson situation. So just thank them and the city for trying to assist us in any way, shape, or form, and, you know, God bless Dave.
Thanks. Thank you, Dave, and I, I couldn't agree more. I mean, I don't know if you know Dave Nelson, but I've, I've known him forever. He probably has one of the toughest jobs in, in the county to, to go into strange areas and retract dogs, and people are claiming ownership, and he's right there in the middle of everything, and, and I just pray for him that, that he's okay, and he doesn't have any residual effects, you know, from this stabbing, and that we see Dave, hopefully, back on the road. He's a great guy. He does a lot of humanitarian work when it comes to our animals and our community, and you never really hear much about him, and that's unfortunate. This happened to Dave, he did a great exemplification, and, you know, Carol's mentioned it, you know, we would like to do a program with the City of Youngstown. Carol was talking about it a long time ago, to see if we can't do that, we can partner with the city into a program with our, with our dog warden's office that they would have a patrol officer to do as well. So on another note, there's something that I'm very sad and I'd like to get off my chest. I was told the other day that Carolyn Givens, Neil Kennedy Recovery Clinic, executive director, Carolyn's not going to be the director anymore, and it's just of my opinion that I believe that Carolyn did not wanna leave. In other circumstances, by people who owned Neil Kennedy called Gateway, decided to go into another direction without checking with people in the community, like myself and Dwayne and others that have worked with Caroline all over the years, and I need to say this about her. I've been involved with a lot of people that had addiction problems, whether people like me for it or hate me for it, so be it. But anytime I'd pick up the phone to call her, she would say, Anthony, get the person down here. I will find a bed. Get the person in detox, and these were crucial situations. She returned my call and she answered my phone. Now, I understand Gateway wants to go into a different direction, but I truly, truly mean this, they made a big mistake cutting her out. And there's some other things involved in this, and I'd like to get to the bottom of it, but as far as Gateway goes, they're from Pennsylvania. They should have come in here and checked with all the professionals like Dwayne, his board, all the people in the addiction service businesses before you made a decision to go into a different direction. Caroline should have stayed and kept her job. She loved Neil Kennedy. She's in the process now of developing a new wing, doing additions to that. There are people in our community that need a Carolyn Givens, and whether you support that or not, I do, and I'm gonna miss her, and I hope that somehow, Dwayne, that she maintains some type of position in our community with addiction. And I know you work very closely with her, both of us.
Commissioner, we, we want that too, and we're, we're hoping, but they have a do not compete clause, so they won't permit her to work in addiction or mental health for six months. So Carolyn says she has another position. She's not allowed to speak of it yet, but if that wasn't the case, she'd have been gobbled up by one of the agencies, but for six months she can't work in what she's trained to do, so. It'll be a long, I get, I get calls twenty-four hours a day from people. I always call her and say, Carolyn, and she, I transfer the call and she get them into detox, and only that, she would talk to families for me. They'd call, they didn't know what to do with their family member. I'd just get her on the phone and she'd talk to them in weekends, evenings, and talk moms and dads through the situation because it's not easy. So she'll be missed, but I have a feeling she's staying in the community just at least for the next six months in different capacity.
Dwayne, when did Gateway buy?
When they owned it.
It's been for a while.
I think it was before Medicaid expansion, and they really had to go to a bigger company to be able to do the billing. Now, with, now with Medicaid expansion, they could, they could maintain themselves an independent agency with board support. But they have, Gateway's not gonna sell them.
No.
They're making money.
A lot of.
That's sad. It is a business, but there are people here who need a Carolyn Givens. Carol wanted to.
You know, I just, Carolyn was a friend of mine as my two colleagues, but I talked to her the other day, and you know, when you called her and you gave her a name of someone, she actually called them. You know, she didn't like to get someone else to call for her or do that. She actually got on the phone as the director there and helped them herself. And I know that wasn't just because. And I know that wasn't just because we made the call or you made the call. It's because that's who she is. She has a great staff there. I, I just, it's going to be a ma, it's just going to be a whole nother environment. And, and the sad part is the medical profession, the mental health profession, and the D D profession of the people that actually work there, of the most vulnerable people that use those areas. The government seems to just knock them down all the time, like they put them on the back shelf, which is wrong. And they sell things to companies that are for profit, whether it's the hospitals, whether it's agencies that deal with our, our challenge. I mean, it's crazy. And they're out for money. And that's, you can't, you can't always worry about the bottom line. That's, I just think that's wrong when they look at these. You can't always be on the bottom line. And Dave, uh, Dave Nelson, I, I wish him the best. God bless him. I mean, I, I know I called him with other kind of concerns other than dogs because, you know, when you live in the park, you got all kinds of things and you take pictures and say, Dave, what is this? Because he was an animal charity guy in, in Jackson, Lake Milton, and out in that area forever. And he'll say, oh, this is what it is. Don't go near it. Don't do this. Stay away. But I mean, he knew everything. Un, unbelievable the experience this man has. He was the best thing on the streets for us.
He's, he'll be good.
Yes.
It's, it's funny. Karen takes pictures. I thought it was a fox and she, and, and found out it was a coyote in her backyard. And, uh, it was a coyote.
And it came right up to the, unbelievable.
I had the black bear in my backyard.
Comes right up to the patio and sat there and looked at me and I'm in, I'm in the kitchen. I'm like, what?
And I just wanted to add, you know, congratulations, Rocky, you know, this ability to retire and accomplish. You're a Terry. Do some things you want to do. Uh, welcome, John. And I wanted to welcome Jody and Betty, you know, uh, uh, it's, there's a lot of great people that work at the county. So, uh, in all the departments, Anna does a great job on our behalf and, you know, and, and Jimmy, you got to take care of Jimmy and purchasing, you know? Jimmy's running in a, in different directions, so you, you can help ease the, the tension on Jimmy. So, um, but all good people in all departments do a fantastic job and we welcome you because, uh, you wouldn't be there if, if they didn't feel you were the same type of people. So welcome. Thank you.
And in closing, I just want to congratulate Audrey for the hundred percent success rate in the SNAP program. A lot of people in our community rely heavily on those types of services, so we want to thank you. Rocky, we're going to miss you. Been a friend a long time. Door's always open to you. You know that, Terry. And Mr. Lucini, it's a pleasure to meet you and wish you all the best. And to our new employees in Mahoney County, wish you all the best too. Okay? All right. That being said, Nancy, our next meeting?
Next Thursday, right here.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio again? Commissioner Chaffey can't.
Yes. Thank you.